Give me liberty and give me Annette.
Welcome to Annette on Life, Liberty and Happiness, a podcast where we talk about the Constitution, history, politics, and pretty much anything else I want to talk about. I'm Annette Bybee, I'm your hostess. Oh, I'm excited to announce that I am now on Amazon Music. So you can find me now on iTunes, Stitcher, Spotify, Amazon Music, and iHeartRadio, as well as YouTube. So if you want to see what this podcast looks like and see who we are, go to youtube.com/AnnetteTalks and you can find me there. And feel free to shoot me an email at annette@annettox.com if you have comments or questions. Or you can comment on my Facebook page, facebook.com/AnnetteTalks, or on my website, annettetalks.com. Pretty much just Google Annette Talks and you'll find me somewhere. And I'm excited today because I've been wanting to chat with someone about this topic for a while. What I want to talk about is running for office and holding office, what it's like. Should you be doing this? Is it as scary as it seems to me? And we're fortunate to be joined today by Mary Lee Boyack. Hi, Mary Lee.
Hi.
And I'm, just so everyone knows, well, a lot of people that have been listening for a while know your son Connor, and that I've had him on a few times, and that's how I found you. And I think I saw you on Facebook, because I'm friends with Connor on Facebook, and I saw that you were running for office in Utah. And so I thought, oh, look, someone's running for office. And so I kind of, you know, looked at your posts and everything. But we had never chatted. And so I reached out to you, and you let me know that not only had you run for office, but you actually held office as city council in Poway, which is just north of San Diego, for six years, and that you'd also been involved in some other initiatives in California back in the day. So I wanted to pick your brain about the whole running for office, holding office thing, because I'm probably going to run at some point, and I know some of my listeners have at least considered it. So you're our go-to for information on that today. So tell us, how did you first get involved in politics and what kind of got you hooked?
Well, it's kind of funny. I have loved politics since I was a girl, and I don't know why. My parents were informed voters, and we would kind of talk a little bit, but they weren't political by any stretch of the imagination. But I always loved it. And so I got involved in student government in high school, you know, the whole nine yards. And went on to do my undergrad, and then I decided to go to law school.
Your undergrad, and was that political science?
No, my undergrad was in business management.
Okay.
Boring, snore, snore. But I, and I graduated in three years, and so I thought, oh, should I get an MBA? And I just had this feeling, no, you should go to law school. And I thought, okay, why not? So hauled off and went to law school. There were only four women in my class, only two of us made it through the first year. Things have changed now, it's 60% female, I'm like, whoa. Anyway, and I began getting involved in my community. And, you know, I was on the PTA and volunteering all over and heavily involved the Boy Scouts. We had four sons. But I would say my first politically active or community active thing that I did was at the end of our street was a wide street with kind of collector, or, you know, I don't know what you call them, little blank spaces in the middle. I don't know what you would call them. Anyway, and they were empty and they were dirt, but they were full of garbage. I mean, old Christmas trees, it was right next to a high school. And I thought, this needs to be cleaned up. And so I went down to City Hall and I said, this area, or actually, I went to the city council meeting. I didn't know what I was doing. And I said, you know, we've got this terrible area, oh, medians, that's what I would call them. And, but really wide ones. And I said, this place is awful. And they're like, oh, absolutely. Boom, they went out and they were clean in a week. And I thought, okay, that was cool.
Was this in California at the time?
Yeah, this was Southern California in Poway. And then they didn't have the flashing lights or anything next to my children's elementary school. And it was a very busy road. And so I went and I said, you know, we really need flashing lights and warnings here. And got that in, and I thought, okay, this is really cool. So I started attending meetings, and I got appointed to the committees. I first got on to Parks and Rec Committee. And there was an area behind our house, big, large, open space, and they wanted to, commercial developers wanted to come in. And so we fought them off, and to the point where the city manager said to any person that would come, a developer that would come, they would say, if you can get through that woman, you could go ahead and develop the area. And I never let them. And we put in a big giant park there for the community. So then I got on the budget review committee. So I began to be very involved and started looking around the city for things that needed fixing and doing. Began paying attention to the issues in the city, began, you know, I joined the Rotary, and I joined the Chamber of Commerce, and just started getting very involved in the community. And I tell you, with all of that, the one thing I realized was, one person can make a big difference. And that lesson just came over and over and over again to me, where I would just ask about one thing and boom, they would take care of it. Or someone would come to me and say, what can we do about this? And I'd say, well, let's go. And it would get fixed, especially at the local level. I was astounded at the impact that one person could make.
So you were appointed to that position?
The committees, yes.
Okay, but you, did you have to run for office to be on the town council?
Well, so then, let's see, in 1996, I had a midlife crisis. It lasted 20 minutes, I'm very efficient. And I said to my husband, I want to run for office, and I want to teach at BYU Education Week, and I want to write a book. And he said those wonderful words that every spouse should say. He said, go for it, and was totally supportive. Within two weeks, a city, the city council member called me and said, can I meet with you? And she said she was stepping down and wanted me to run for her spot, which I did. And I ran, and I was still very unknown in the community, right? I was just kind of beginning to build my cred. And ran, had the support of the mayor and two of the council members, was running very, very well when the mayor, who had a problem with strong women, decided to pull his endorsement on the front page. And so I ended up losing. And it was a, you know, good race, especially for a person coming out of nowhere. It was a good first race, but the president of the Chamber of Commerce won. And I remember thinking, what the heck was that? You know, here I'd made this monumental effort, and I wasn't in the habit of losing, to be honest. And I was pretty surprised by that. And I thought, well, maybe the Lord has something else in mind, you know? And I just went back to get involved in the community and doing my thing. A year and a half later, I was approached to be the regional coordinator for Proposition 22 in California. That was the first go-round of traditional marriage.
Oh, that was before Prop 8 then?
Right, before Prop 8. This was the first one that changed the state statute. And I thought, oh, I'm ready. I just ran a campaign, I know how to do this. I've already got on my team. And away we went, and I realized that the learning that I'd experienced from that first run prepared me to serve in that capacity. And it went great, and we won. That was good, that was good.
So you were on the city council, or you were on committees first? And then you ran for city council, cheated out of that by the mayor, but then went, then went on this politics, what can you expect, right?
That's right.
Then you went on to be regional coordinator for Prop 22, and took your experience from running for city council. And then you were successful with Prop 22?
So helpful, so helpful. So I stayed involved in the community, and then in 2003, we had a terrible wildfire. Burned through our city badly, burned 75 homes to the ground, injured, or injured, damaged probably another 100. And I, as that fire was raging through our community, I raced over to the evacuation center. And that was an interesting experience. I go walking in, I said to my husband, look, hold the fort, I'm going to go over here. I, I'm an organizer, so I do that kind of thing. And I said, I will send people in need over to the house, so you hold the fort here. So I walked into the evacuation center and the place, it was the community center, right? The place was crazy. There were people teeming everywhere, you know, there were just, it was just chaos. And I said to somebody who, you know, who's in charge? And they pointed to this man way over the corner, they go, he is. And so I had been on the phone as I was driving there with our state president, who was our regional leader of our church congregation. And he said, how did you get ahold of me? And I said, I just called you. And he said, no one's been able to get through to me. He was up in another part of the community, and he said, we have 60 beds and volunteers already. In fact, when we went to church that day, there were fires all over. We said an opening prayer, they said, everybody go, get ready to take care of people, and you're dismissed. So I go over to this guy in the corner, he's on the phone, and the place is nuts. And I said, I just waited, and he got done, and he said, can I help you? And I said, hi, you know, my name's Mary Lee Boyack. I want you to know, we have an alternate facility with 60 beds and support volunteers and supplies, because the fire was coming down the hill behind this community center. And he said, who are you? And I said, well, we're the Mormons. And he said, I figured. And then he said, you seem like a go-to kind of person, can I put you in charge? I said, of what? He said, that. And he points to the insanity, and I turn around and I go, wait a minute. He's the Red Cross guy, I go, you want me to be in charge of all that? He goes, yeah, go take care of it. And I just went, okay. I turned around and I thought, well, this kind of is a combination of a Cub Scout PAC meeting and a relief society, or, you know, a women's work meeting. And the missionaries from my church were all standing there with their arms folded. And I go over and I go, okay, you two, go set up a children's center. You two, go set up a kitchen to accept food. You two, go do intake, you two, go. And I just, boom, 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 took over, ran that evacuation center for about four days. Volunteers would stream in, I just put them all to work, it was amazing. We had pulled probably about 1,500, 2,000 people go through the evacuation center. So after that, I then went to work with fire relief. And I organized all the community groups, and we helped all the families who got burned out. An amazing experience. We raised $100,000 in a week and a half, and then coordinated all the offers that were coming in from all over the country of people that wanted to help. It was remarkable. And we helped all those families get in, all of them. Were in housing within less than two weeks, fully supplied. We got donations like you wouldn't believe, it was miraculous. So that was 2003. So in 2000, oh, and so when I'm sitting in the evacuation center on day three, in walks the city council and the mayor with the press. They walked up to the front of this room, mind you, we've got 1,000 people in there, and many of whom had lost their homes and lost everything they owned. They trot up to the front, and they do their press conference. They get done, and they walk out. And they do not stop and talk to a soul. Worst disaster ever hit our city. Here, these people are grieving and terrified, and they walk out the door. And I've standing there, and I watched them walk out, and the guy next to me lost everything. And he said, was that our mayor and our city council? And I said, yes, it was. And he said, I expected more. And I said, so did I. And I watched their sorry butts walk out the door, and I thought, I am running for council. We must have somebody who cares on the council. And so I ran, and they were, all of them endorsed the other guy, who was a newbie in town. They were terrified of me for some reason. The newspaper, who, the two newspapers that were controlled by this good old boy group, right? All endorsed the other guy, all of them, and I won by a landslide.
That's awesome.
Greed them.
You know, I expected that you were going to say that they walked in and said, who's in charge, and, you know, would come acknowledge you and all that. But no, it was just a photo.
No way, no way, no way. They, none of them lifted a finger, none of them donated a penny, none of them did a thing. And I was outraged, I was so mad, so mad. So, you know, I will tell your listeners, if you don't have a heart, if you don't care, don't run. If you're doing this out of ego, don't even bother. Yeah.
And you know what, obviously, the people of the community knew who you were.
Oh, yeah.
Who those people were that walked out without saying a word, and that's why you won in a landslide. So did the, did the Prop 2 organization skills that you developed help you with running that center?
Oh, yeah.
I was going to say, this is not something that most of us could just walk in and say, I've got the skills, I can do this.
Well, you know, and it was interesting, oh, sorry. I'll get a little mint. It was interesting, all the skillset that you were, excuse me, I've been in Cub Scouts, right? I've been at church, I've been in PTA. And I encounter so many people that go, oh, I don't know what to do, you know, I don't know how to do that. And I say, are you kidding? Are you kidding? You know, you've run a team at work, you've run a household, you've taken care of the family, you volunteered. You got skills and spades. Yeah, so I got elected in '04. And then another fire hit, 2007, fire hits again, another one, north part of town. Races through, burns down about 100 homes, burns down 2,400 homes in our community. So at that point, we were up, you know, boom, I'm at the evacuation center doing same drill data, but now I'm on the city council. And then we organized our community groups within 24 hours. And we just got them all together, we're like, okay, who's doing what? Do, 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 do. And then I went from community to community, training the other individuals who were like me, who were willing to step forward, here's what you do. And we got all the communities responding to the fires as well. But once again, that time, one city council member showed up at the evacuation center. And helped, he helped for about an hour, serving the food, and then he left. And then the mayor showed up with media, and he walked in, and everybody was like, Mary Lee, can you help with this, Mary Lee, can you help with that? And he turned around and walked out. Because he didn't care, he was just there and wasn't getting enough attention. So anyway.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. So I ran for reelection in '08. That time, nobody had a prayer of a chance against me. So that campaign went pretty easily, which was good, because I was running that campaign, I was traveling all over the country speaking, working on a new book. I was serving as the women's leader in my congregation at the same time. And they approached me to do Prop 8.
So is the city council, is that like a part-time gig?
Okay. Yeah, it was part-time.
You're raising kids, although by that point, I guess they're a little older, right?
Yeah, I have a couple of kids still at home.
And I know you're an attorney, were you practicing law at that point? So you, I don't, I'm getting tired just listening to.
Oh, no, honey, it gets better. So I, they asked me to be regional coordinator, area coordinator this time for Prop 8. And I love it, they said, so what are you doing? And I tell them, and they're like, you have no time. I go, uh-uh. And they said, we're asking you anyway, I said, fine. So we began to work on Prop 8 way harder. Prop 22, all the churches banded together except for one. Prop 8, none of the churches would play ball except for only one. It was bad. So we were very, it was very different, that go-around was very different.
That's interesting. I remember, I was living in California at the time, and we went out as a ward, that's a congregation of our church, and held up signs. And I remember people driving by and flipping us off, we got cursed, the whole thing. Oh, and then we, when you donated money, we were outed and.
Oh, yeah.
It was publicized how much money and who we were.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was.
Yeah, and.
Easy time.
I was on the city council, and the city, the city manager said, you could ruin your political career. And I said, don't care, don't care. I'm, I was in politics and to serve, not, not for ego. I was there to serve. And I said, too bad. Yeah, we had some really bad stuff going down, really bad stuff. But then in the middle of that, I was diagnosed with breast cancer.
Oh, my gosh.
I told you.
I don't know how you survived.
On election day, my surgeon calls and says, well, we have to do your surgery on Tuesday. I go, Tuesday's not really a very good day for me. Oh, are you a poll worker? I said, no, I'm running for office. No lie, well, I might mess up for you that morning. And.
Most of us would have, would be overwhelmed just by the breast cancer.
Oh, hello.
So did you, were you able to, like, did it help any actually to be so darn busy that you didn't have time to stress and worry about that?
Oh, no, 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 no. Tiling on, and, and I mean, I'm going, having a bone scanned, and then I come home and I have to put out 30,000 flyers for Prop 8. And oh, I look back and I just think, how? So, yeah, I had my surgery, so that night, I come out of it, and I said, how's Prop 8? And my husband said, we've won. I said, sweet. And all night, the nurse kept sticking in his head in the doorway. He says, Boyack, you're winning, you're winning. And I'm just laying there going, I don't care. I don't care, I bet it by a truck, I don't care.
You know what, that was an interesting election too, because there we were in California, and on the same day, Prop 8 is passed, which is to define marriages between a man and a woman for the state constitution, and Barack Obama was elected president. Both happened at the same time. And I remember thinking, that's interesting. So I just thought about it for a few minutes, I thought, well, that's because African-Americans tend to be socially conservative. So the same people that were voting for the president were voting for Prop 8. And it was just such an interesting election. So, yeah, we were happy about some things, not so happy about other things. But what a time to live in California, huh? Because it wasn't too many years, it wasn't too long after that, I was out with a tea party.
Yeah, it was wild. And so I then served four more years, I got reelected with landslide again. And, you know, it was hard, because I was a staunch conservative, leaning libertarian, and, you know, here I am in Southern California. Luckily, our pocket was relatively conservative, but it was shifting dramatically during those years. So, yeah, so I served on the city council, did a ton of stuff. It was hard. The other woman was recalled, rightly so, I was the only woman on the council. And which frankly, who cares, they did. You know, the guys were not terribly kind, that's the understatement. And, yeah, but I tell you, I loved having a neighbor call or somebody from the community call, and I could, with one phone call, solve their problems. That was awesome. I loved that. We had a very responsive staff, they really placed their priority on serving the residents. It was phenomenal. And we did a number of things, we did a Poway Spirit Day, we started a one-day day of service. The entire community would come out and do service all over the community. You know, we did some really cool stuff. I started a PCLI, Poway Community Leadership Institute, training people for your very thing. If you want to run for office, or if you want to serve in the Chamber of Commerce, if you want to be on the school board or whatever. And we held a two-day training, and then they did a six-month project, and so we did that. It was fun, it was fun.
So after, so you served eight years on the city council? And so that took you, what, to 2012? And then.
And in 2012, I considered running for mayor. The mayor we had, our mayor died, we were doing chemo together. And he died, and the other guy had been in for decades. In fact, when I ran, the average tenure was 25 years.
Wow.
Yeah, it was ludicrous. So I ran, I said, I will serve for two terms, and then I will step down. And so I stepped down, and it floored the entire community, because everybody stayed on for life. And I said, uh-uh, I believe in a robust Republican, I want lots of voices, and no, I'm stepping down. So I considered running for mayor. My health still wasn't quite strong enough. And I thought, no, I just didn't feel right about it, so I didn't run, which is good, because the next year, we ended up moving to Utah. Came to Utah.
So in 2013, you go to Utah, and is your health getting any better at this point? I mean, in 20.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. I just had like a ton of surgeries, you know, and stuff that I had to go through and recuperate from. But I came to Utah and swore off politics. Utah's good, you know, it's Utah, everything's fine. I don't need to do anything here, I'll just do humanitarian work. And the good Lord had something else in mind. And one morning, I wake up with this in my head saying, your mother Teresa, your Margaret Thatcher, not Mother Teresa, get back to work. No lie. Huh, what? And it just repeated.
I cannot imagine you, just in the few minutes that we've been talking and just having met you, I cannot imagine you ever having sworn off politics.
Well, I was still paying attention, but I was doing the humanitarian work. I was with Mothers Without Borders, we were doing work in Africa, it was awesome. And then, but then, after the cancer, I couldn't travel to Africa for a while. And so I thought, I'll just do good, I'll just do good. And, you know, yeah, that didn't last long, didn't last long. So here, I got involved with Family Watch International. We're a global nonprofit that protects the family, pro-life, protects children all over the world. That was awesome. And as I got involved and paid attention in Utah, I realized, oh, there's a lot of problems here. And we had a lot of really good pro-family, pro-life groups, but they weren't really coordinating their efforts. And so I created the Empowered Families Coalition, uniting them all. And it was great, because I was fresh blood, I was new, everybody kind of knew my reputation, because of the other stuff I do, you know? But we got organized, and it's been amazing, amazing. And so then, last year, I started the Abortion Free Utah Coalition, uniting pro-life groups to actively work on ending elective abortion in the state of Utah. And I can't tell you how many people I encounter that go, oh, we have abortion in Utah? Mm-hmm, eight babies a day, eight babies a day being killed in the state of Utah, elective. So we formed that coalition, and then I felt like I was supposed to run. And I fought that for about a year and a half. I fought tooth and nail, I did not want to run, did not. It's like, to the women out there, it's like having your second baby, you know it's going to hurt.
I was going to say, what, just that, before we get to your next decision, that obviously you came around to running again, why did you not want to run?
Um, you know, kind of, first of all, I didn't want to run local, been there, done that, right? I'd been involved locally for decades. And so I didn't really have a strong push to go there. I was content, I was working with Family Watch International, and we were working all over the world, doing amazing things to protect the family and to protect children and protect life. You know, the Empowered Families Coalition was just going gangbusters, it's been just really effective. I was good, right? I started abortion free, I was busy, I was busy. I was working as executive director of Family Watch while I was also doing my law practice. So I was putting in 50, 60-hour work weeks. I was good, I was plenty busy, I didn't need nothing else.
Feeling you're the type of lady, always been busy and always will be busy, that's just my guess.
Amen, yeah.
You're a type A lady.
I'm a screaming type A.
I can, yeah, I, I'm sitting here, because, you know, I, and I'm probably speaking for a lot of people out there that are listening. I don't, I've had some people tell me type A, I don't consider myself type A. I'm definitely not U-type A, that I know, definitely not U-type A. And so I think, she can do it, because she's a type A, and so she can juggle all these balls in the air, and she can put in 50, 60-hour work weeks or whatever, that's not me. So should I just stop even thinking about it right now?
Oh, God, no. I tell you, some of the most effective people I have seen in politics are the quiet, the centered, the, I focus on, you know, this area, oh, no. What I love about a republic and representative government is, it's representative. It doesn't just say, you have to fit this mold to do this job, baloney. And in fact, when I was running for state office, there were, I encountered this one woman, she goes, we have entirely too many lawyers up there. And I said, actually, no, we don't, no, we don't. I said, I've been shocked at how few there are, because they can't take two months out of their law practice and go, excuse me, I'm going to go do this for a while. And I said, no, there are, you know, teachers and engineers, and there's, you know, guys that work on air conditioning, and there's people, I mean, there's just, you know, bankers, and moms and grandpas, and there's just all kinds of people. And that's what makes our government representative. that's what makes our, our government representative. If all we had were, you know, ridiculous type A lawyers, we would have a horrible government. We, we would have horrible, it'd be horrible. Um, you know, you, you don't want a country run by bulldozers, you know, you just really don't. I mean, there's a role for a bulldozer. I'm a bulldozer. And so I get it. There's a role, but oh my gosh, you know, I need right next to me, uh, you know, the, the woodworking guy. And then I need, you know, the, the grandma and then I, you know, we need all those people to have good government.
Okay, good. You make me feel better because I'm thinking, ah, that's so not me. That's just.
No, 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 no.
All right. Now that we've established that, we need all kinds, everyone, we need you all. We know all hands on deck. It feels like right now is an all hands on deck time in our lives. And, you know, I, I, you and I talked about this before we started recording, but my goal with talking to you and then next week I'm going to talk to someone who's been very active in protests and things like that. And then the week after I'm going to talk to a, a mom who's been helpful in getting her daughter unmasked for school. My goal is to talk to people who are out being involved in various different ways. So people can find their goal, their role, their niche, whatever it is that they should be doing. At, because we are in a time right now that it's got to be all hands on deck. And does, even if it doesn't mean running for officer, or maybe if it does just mean making a, a difference for your kids or your family or your city or whatever. I don't think any one of us can afford to not be doing something. And especially not if you're feeling prompted. And a lot of us that are, are in the church or, or Christian or whatever, God fearing people that feel called to do something. If you're feeling called to do something right now, it's time to do that thing. You've got to do that thing, whatever that thing is. And, and I've had the same fire in my belly that you've had all my life, you know? I've always, my, both my parents were very political, so I was raised that way. My dad was an attorney and.
Yeah, my poor children. Ah, poor Connor.
Well, Connor obviously is very, you know, he's taken up with that because he's president of.
Well, it's funny, of all my kids, he hated it the most and griped and complained the most. So we all laugh at him now. We're just like, ha, here you are doing it full time.
That's awesome.
Because we had our kids involved in the community, doing door to door, working on issues. You know, we did this as a family. It was a very big thing. Um, and yeah, the one kid that does it full time did not like it.
And now he's doing it. That's good to know too, because my girls roll their eyes at me, you know, we, we, we go out and, and they know exactly how I feel about masks. They, they know, I mean, and if, if you don't know, you can go on my Facebook page or look at my past podcasts, but I think they're, they're horrible for a lot of reasons. And the fact that, that my kids are having to wear them to school and they're going two days a week and I already told them, look, you want me to find a way to get those masks off of you? You let me know and I'll go to bat for you. Well, none of them wanted, they all want to fit in. They all want to go along to get along, yada, yada, yada. But they know. So whenever time we go out, if we go someplace, we're under a state mandate right now. So pretty much every place we go, we have to wear them. But occasionally we'll go someplace, like there's a restaurant that has a sign that says, wear one if you want, don't wear one if you don't want. And I'll say, girls, you see that sign? We're not wearing masks in here. And they've heard the whole thing and they get so tired of hearing it from me. But they're going to grow up knowing that you don't just go along. So anyway, I'm, I'm hoping that maybe one of them will at least follow along and uh, voluntarily go along with it later. But, so I, I, I want people to know, this is the time. Do not, please do not sit back and do nothing anymore. We are beyond that time. And if you are a member of the church, you know, President Nelson has said, you've got to have a personal revelation right now, all the time. This is, this is the time. If you haven't gotten on, gotten to a place in your life where you can receive constant personal revelation, this is the time. Do it now. And then as it relates to being politically active, start listening and take action, even though it's scary. I know it's scary because I've kind of feel like it's scary, which is why I'm exploring, you know, what it is I'm supposed to be doing besides my podcast and my Facebook page and things like that. So now that I've gotten that out there, let's go back to, you spent a year and a half fighting the impulse to run for office or the, oh, draw inspiration, maybe something's telling you to run for office. Year and a half. So what finally changed?
Year and a half fought that tooth and nail. Um, finally, I, I'll tell you, I wanted to make sure that I wasn't running for ego. Um, and so I had to get past that. And when I realized how much I didn't want to run, I realized I wasn't running out of ego because I really didn't want to do it. And, um, just because I had other things that really calling to my heart. And, um, and so when I finally, you know, came to grips with that I was supposed to run, I thought, well, I don't do anything halfway. And when you do feel like God's calling you to do something, you don't want to say, yeah, I did a lousy job. You know what I mean? I mean, you just, uh, you're like, if I'm being called to do this, then I'm going to do it full tilt. And from the beginning, um, I knew, uh, you know, I've, I've trained people on how to run for office. And I knew that the number one thing I did not have, and that was a base. Um, my opponent, uh, Kate Christoffersen grew up here in, in Lehigh and Merrick Fork. His great, great grandparents or great grandparents settled the area. I mean, their family goes way back. You know, he's related to an apostle and I was new and I thought, I have no base, you know, I just don't know that many people here. I just don't. And, um, and I thought, well, if I can do door to door, I can nail this because I, I like door to door and I like people and I can be pretty persuasive. And I thought, okay. And then COVID was like, sorry, you can do door to door, right? Uh, no door to door. And let me tell you, calling three hundred people a day that don't really want to talk to you, not the same. It just wasn't the same. And so I ran full tilt. Uh, we ran a really good campaign. Uh, my fundraising was stellar. Uh, we had really, really good messaging. Uh, but we had two big hurdles that, that, uh, proved my defeat. One was, of course, that he knew everyone. That's a big one. Um, but then the second one, about a month, as, as many of you know, about a month before the election, um, the liberals came out and told everybody to register Democrat, uh, register Republican and to vote. They wanted to get Huntsman in desperately and I was very much targeted. They wanted me out. Because I had been working, uh, fighting on a first name basis, pro, uh, Planned Parenthood. Um, I had taken a position that was contrary to, uh, some of the LGBTQ activist agenda. Um, and so I was very much targeted, uh, you know, and so we had in this, in my, uh, in my voting, we had three thousand extra votes from normal and they all went to him. And so, uh, he went. Uh, which was okay by me. I, I, I was, this was such a weird race. I was running because I felt I was supposed to. I was not disappointed that I lost. I thought, okay, I'll go back to same babies. I'm good. You know, I mean, um, yeah, I, it, it was very, very different. Normally you feel, you know, like the first time I lost, oh, I was just sad, you know, and crashed and you're a little bit embarrassed. I wasn't even the least bit embarrassed on this one. I thought, nope. I put myself out there. No one else is willing to do that. It's all good. It's all good. So, yeah, this was kind of a weird one.
I wonder, uh, do you have any, I mean, I'm sure you've thought about this a lot, but why do you think you were told to run if you weren't going to get elected?
Um, you know, I don't have the answer yet and I am okay with that. You know, like I said, the first time I ran, uh, the answer didn't come for a year and a half of here's why you needed to do that. It was to learn for this. Okay. And so this time I was so open. It's a really great way to run. When you're running because you think you're supposed to, but you don't care whether you win or lose. It's very odd. I don't, I don't always recommend that. I think it's good to have a fire in your belly. Uh, but it just was the way this one unfolded and I was okay with that because I knew win or lose, there would be good things that would come of it from my effort. Uh, that there would be good things that I would learn that I would inspire a lot of people. I'll never forget, I was talking to this one woman and she said, my three daughters have been watching you and are so inspired by what you're doing. And I thought, maybe I'm ready for them. Maybe I'm ready for those three little girls who someday will turn around and run. And so I was totally okay with that. You know, I was okay with giving it and I was putting in, you know, twelve hour days every day after day after day. I was willing to work really, really, really hard and let it turn out the way it was supposed to turn out. So, yeah, we'll see.
Well, that's awesome. I mean, that, that's actually, I think, a really great way to run. If you can keep, if you can keep, you know, the twelve hour days going, like, keep that, the, um, the drive and, you know, all that going, but still be, be okay with the idea of not winning. I think that's awesome because you can almost be more genuine, like, you know, whatever, I can, I'm just going to put myself.
I know. I thought, don't care, you know, I, you're upset with me, stake in taking a strong position defending the family. Don't care. You know, people were like, oh, you know, they're really coming after you over your stance on, you know, abortion. I'm like, bring it. I got no problem with that. Um, I will stand for truth and, uh, I will fight for truth and I, like I say, didn't care about the consequences. I, I wasn't going to backpedal at all.
Well, I would have voted for you if I lived there. So that brings me to the big questions that are, that are coming up in my mind now then. If someone decided they did want to run for something, um, I don't know, city council, school board, anything, if you're starting small, how do you even get started? Like, what, what's your first steps, you know?
Um, I think one of the things that irritates me and I see it a lot here in Utah is people that run without a civic resume. Um, when we just had our last city council race in Lehigh, I would say, and we had, what, eight, twelve people? We had a lot of people run. Out of that whole group, besides the incumbents, there was only one, maybe two, that had done anything in the community. I mean, anything, served and, you know, coached their kids' little league, anything. And, and I remember going to the debates and asking, uh, tell me what you've done in the community. Uh, you don't, you know, and, and people were running for mayor and they hadn't, and I'm like, how many city council meetings have you attended? Well, I, I just started. Well, so, you know, I, I had a real beef with that. If you are committed to your community, get going. Go out, volunteer, get involved, ask. They're always desperate for, for people to be on those committees. It's a great way to, um, learn. It's a great way to build your experience, your resume, your networking, um, your understanding. Yeah. If, if, if this is something you want to do, if you want to get on the school board, start attending the meetings every single time. Start speaking on things. Start volunteering to be on committees. Start paying attention to the issues. Start sharing with other people. Um, you don't just start by running. Craziest thing, uh, it's just mind boggling to me. And I, I encounter so many people here that say, oh, I'm going to run for governor. I'm like, really? Okay. What are you doing? You know, and how many people do you have on your list? You know, well, I have two hundred and fifty. Um, keep going. You know? So I would say.
I can't imagine starting a governor.
Yeah. Number one, get involved. Um, get involved and start learning. Uh, number two, I think is really important is build your network. Um, get your, your Facebook group needs to build, your email distribution list, the, your contact spreadsheet. Um, start building your network of people that you interact with. Um, go attend meetings and, and, and chat with the person next to you and say, hey, you know, can I kind of dialogue with you, you know, maybe in the future and start collecting, um, and building that network. That's enormous. That's enormous. Um, and see, I had been building that on the state level because I had been working at the state level and I had not been building it at the community level because I had no intention of running. So that, that bit me and I knew better because when I ran, I thought, oh, no, I, I haven't been building my network local, you know, which I needed to do. Um, and so that's huge. Start building your base, building your network. And don't, you don't have to pester people to death, but reach out to them. I, maybe a quarterly, hey, how's it going? You know, want to let you know what I'm doing, you know, what's up with you? And keep the little thread of networking going. If you get their contact information, they never hear from you, you're done. They never hear, they forget. Or if you ping them constantly, here, let me send you this latest, let me share with you all this latest stuff I've seen and it's so dangerous and awful. Forget it. You're done. So keep a healthy network going. Uh, and you, um, I, I think you really need to be clear on what you are going to do and what you offer. I remember when I was chatting with the incumbent about whether or not he was going to run again. He was seriously considering and was telling people he wasn't going to run. And I said to him, what, he'd been in eight years. I said, what do you have left to do? What is it that you still haven't done that you want to accomplish? Because I thought, hey, if he's got something, I'll just support him and help him. And he said, well, I like being in charge of this committee. And I said, well, I get that. Uh, what do you actually want to do? What do you want to accomplish? And he said, well, I like being in charge of this committee. And it was nothing. Um, and so that, that's what saddened me when he did get reelected was he had nothing. I think we need to be really clear on, here's what I am going to do. Make it practical, make it achievable, uh, don't have a laundry list. I would keep it to three or less and inspire people. So for example, when I was running for, um, city council, I was going to develop our communication. Their meetings weren't televised. People would send an email and not hear from them in two weeks. It was ridiculous. So communication, number one. Number two was emergency preparedness. Our city was hit by earthquakes, wildfires, power outages, lots. And I felt that our readiness needed to be increased significantly. Um, and the third was that I wanted to go do town hall meetings. They had zero. And I felt that we needed to go out into the neighborhoods and, and reach out. I was very clear. These are the three things I'm going to do, right? And they were, uh, inspiring. Um, in fact, when you're picking those things, I took a training once that was so helpful to me. They said, you must run on people with, with something that will connect with people's values. What do they value? So for example, right now, you, you could run on, we value our children's health. Okay, there's a value. Uh, we value our freedom from government force. There's a value, okay? Um, we, you know, and, and so you pick these and you want to connect to values. And you want that value to be serious enough that people will get up off of the couch for you. Is it a value where, um, people would say, you know, oh, well, you know, I want our, our budgeting system to be da, 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 and I'd just be like, it's an important value. No one's getting up off the couch to go vote for you. Okay? So you want it to be a value that connects with your voters that they feel so strongly about that they will get up off of their couch and go vote for. Make America great again. Oh, man. People felt like we were bleeding to the other countries. We were losing jobs. We were losing industries, that we were losing our power. And that inspired all kinds of people. Uh, it's time for a change, you know, Obama, inspiring, right? Fresh, new, okay. And here are the changes we're going to make, you know, all of them were bad, but it's okay. And, you know, you want it to be a very strong value that will get people up off the couch. Can you tell me what Biden's is?
Trying to put together a sentence is what seems like his is, but yeah.
I couldn't tell you. I couldn't tell you right now.
It's, it's the D behind his name. It's just that he has a D behind his name. That's all.
I, I could not tell you what he wants to do.
Getting Trump.
Other than make masks mandatory throughout the United States. I couldn't tell you what his vision is. I couldn't, I couldn't tell you any of that right now because his messaging has been so poor. Um, and muddy. The only thing that are getting people up off the couch is the D. That's it.
Yeah, voting against Trump. That's, that's all he's.
And that will not inspire moderates and independents to get up off the couch. Um, because people look at politicians and say, what's in it for me? What are you going to do for me? Because you're my representative. What, what are you going to do for me? Tell me. And if it's something I like, I'll support you. If you're not going to do anything for me. So I think those are kind of really three important steps. Build your, uh, involvement, build your network. And then center yourself and your efforts on clear values that get people out of the couch.
And then how do you go about just getting the thing started? I mean, I always think like, how do you raise money? I have no, I would not have the first clue on how to do something.
The one thing I think that is really helpful in politics is you have to be a little bit fearless and you have to ask everyone, everyone. Uh, and so, you know, for raising money, you just make a giant list of everybody you've ever known in your entire life. And you, you know, even your cousin in Indiana or whoever, you make the list of everybody. And, um, personal contact is everything. I usually do an initial email to everybody saying, hey, I'm doing fundraising, you know, appreciate your help. Uh, you get about a 10% response to that if you're lucky. And then you, but you've kind of done the warning shot across the bow. Uh, and then I just call people and I call people and then I say to them, is there anyone you know that I should call? Um, one guy, uh, I said to Connor, is there anybody you know that I should call? And he goes, well, I had this donor asking about this issue and I told him I didn't do that. My mom does it. I called the guy and, uh, he wrote me a very large check. Never met him, never talked to him. Um, so you want to ask key people, you know, who do you know that I should talk to? Um, and ask your family, ask everybody. And, um, when, i- i- in, in California, the limit was a hundred dollars per person. Get that. And you couldn't get any money from businesses or anything, just individuals. Okay. And so I had to raise, I raised thirty thousand dollars for my campaign, a hundred dollars or less. And so that was, right? Lots of phone calling. And I would say, well, the limit's a hundred dollars. You know, they say, well, how much do you need? And I go, well, the limit's a hundred dollars. And I just kind of let it dangle there, you know? And most of them, you know, would say, oh, okay, you know? Uh, but if it was a struggle, I would say. But if it was a struggle, I would say, "Anything, I, I am grateful for anything." And I'll tell you, my favorite donation, Carmen Cubits, every campaign, $15. She was always my first check, I'd get this little envelope in the mail with $15 from Carmen Cubits, and it was my favorite. Anything I worked on, I would say, "I'm doing fundraising," and I'd get $15 from Carmen Cubits, so it was really cool. So you just have to do a lot of personal outreach. People donate to you, so you need to call them. And be okay with a no. And I would say, if they said no, I would say, "Okay, I get that now is not a good time for you, would it bother you if I reached out to you another, you know, month?" And oftentimes, they would say, "You're right, now's not a good time, call me in a month." And I would get them on route too. Sometimes they would say, you know, "No, leave me alone, it bothered me forever now." That was very rare, almost, I mean, never. So yeah, you just ask and ask and ask. And that goes for volunteers as well. People want to help you, people like you, they want to help you. Tell them how they can help, don't feel bad about asking people to help. And I'll never forget, when I lost the very first time, we were in the church ladies meeting, and one of the ladies spoke up and said, "You know, I want to talk about the fact that Merrily lost." And I'm like, "Thanks, appreciate that." And, and she said, "My whole family volunteered, and we all walked door-to-door, and you might think that that was a waste, but it wasn't." She said, "We have never felt more energized and more involved in the process." She said, "We are forever changed, and from now on, we'll pay attention and we'll help candidates." She said, "I am so grateful that we had that opportunity." That was so inspiring to me of, it's okay to ask people to help, it, it can be a great blessing. And so I'm very clear about, you know, and people say, "Oh, how can I help?" I go, "Oh, that's great, can you go walk to, you know, 50 doors and, and carry my flyer?" You know, and sometimes I kind of go, "Just let them," and people go, "Oh, let me know how I can help," and they don't want you to actually ask. But I do, and I give them ways. You know, "Can you come stamp all my postcards, you know, can you do this, can you do that?" And I put everybody around me to work. And if they say no, I immediately do the backflip and say, "Oh, that's okay, you know, no worries." And oftentimes, they'll say, you know, "Oh, we have sickness in the family, call me back in two weeks," you know what I mean? But I, I ask everybody to help. And I assume that that helping is going to be a blessing in their lives as well, a positive experience.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that before, but that actually is, I mean, I've worked on several campaigns myself, and I've gone back again and again, and, and, yeah, a lot of times, most of the time, they lost. But I never felt like that was a waste of time. And it wasn't my fault they lost, it was just, you know? But I, I, there, I had a ward member who ran for state senator, he actually, he was running for reelection, and I, I worked for him in college. It was, I, I still have fond memories of doing that, even though it wasn't like fun work, it was phone calls, it was stamping, it was stepping envelopes, it was walking door-to-door, it was handing out flyers. I still have good memories of that time because I was engaged, I was involved in something bigger than myself. And so, and it's the democratic process, and not enough of us get involved.
Yeah.
I think, you know, it, it sounds like a lot of work, and it sounds very difficult, but it also, I'm guessing, is very rewarding for you, even when you don't win. And so what do you think? You recommend this to people that feel drawn?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely, not even a question. Win or lose, it's such a wonderful part of who we are. Oh, no, absolutely, go for it, absolutely, yeah.
Awesome.
You know, I've went twice, lost twice, you know, it's, no, I would, I would totally recommend it.
Awesome. Well, I had two questions, I think, that came on Facebook I was going to ask you, because I, I reached out to my Facebook listeners, and I said, I said, "What questions do you have for Merrily?" And one of them, these are kind of not that related, but I'll throw them out there anyway. One of them said, "Do you think the mandates are constitutional?" And I'm guessing she's talking about the mask mandates. And, yeah, I knew that would be your answer. I, I actually did a whole episode on, when the first lockdowns first started happening, my other attorney friend and I sat down, and we went through why they're all unconstitutional. And, you know.
And, and you know this is political, guys, you know it in your gut. And I hate people go, "Oh, this is scientific." And I said, "Well, then, why did they tell us to begin with, 'Don't wear them,' and now they're saying yes? Why did they say for the wildfire, 'Don't bother, they didn't do any good,' but now they're saying, 'Oh, no, it's really effective.'" And why did my box of masks say, "This does not prevent COVID," but you're telling me that I have to wear it to walk into your place of business or to go to school? Yeah, and, and to be honest, no offense, but there is no way I would put my child under day-long oxygen deprivation and wearing a Petri dish face diaper, no.
I know, I, I've already decided that that's my next big battle, when, because they're going back to school full-time next month. And I always thought, I, I've already emailed the, the school board and the governor and said, "This can't happen." And so, because it's one thing, they're, they're doing it two days a week, they're taking them off for lunch, they're taking them off for recess, whatever, but five days a week, and this thing is so over? And I hammer this to death on my Facebook page, I put the chart up every week as they, they add new material.
It's political.
Yeah, it's completely political. And every time I go to the store and I see, this is all virtue signaling and posturing and going through the motions because we're, we're mandated to do it, but everybody knows this is a guilt.
My mask says, "This is a placebo."
I've got one that says, that says, "This mask is as useless as our governor."
Oh, I, I thought, "If I have to wear it, then I get to send a political message."
Yeah, yeah.
Most of the time, I wear it under my nose.
Same here.
I never pull it up over my nose, I'm like, "You come and tell me." Now, for those that have health conditions, knock yourself out. I'm, I get it, I'm totally okay with that, I got no problem with that. I think those that are vulnerable should protect themselves.
Right.
Go for it. Forcing absolutely everybody else.
It should totally be our choice, you know? And that's what I said to them, this should be a choice, the kids and the parents should be making together. But I, I'm, I, I can't, I can't stomach sending my kids there, you know, five days a week in these things.
All right, what's the other question?
The question was, "Do politicians," as she said, "they," I think she means politicians in general, "really represent the people?" And then the other one was, "How can communities put a focus on strengthening the family to strengthen society?" Those are kind of big questions.
I will tell you, the politicians, especially here in the state of Utah, but pretty much everywhere, the politicians are as good as their constituents. So if you have constituents, voters, citizens, who are reaching out with concerns, questions, who are paying attention, you've got a stellar representative by far, almost all the time. They're being held accountable, they're being informed, they know how their constituents feel, you know? When I was on city council, my rule was, one person counted 1,000 times. So when I had one person come in and talk to me about an issue, that counted for 1,000 people that I knew felt that way, okay? Even greater on the state level. So yes, they can be tremendous representatives. Now, if they're not hearing from their constituents, guess who they are hearing from? They're hearing from lobbyists, they're hearing from the liberals, they're hearing from all those people that don't stay quiet. And so honestly, it's hard to fault them when that's what they're hearing.
Right.
But if they hear from all of us, I have found, they tend to be, now, you're gonna get a bad apple every now and again, but by far, most people really are right on, they're paying attention, they're, they're responding to their constituents, and they're good.
All right, there's me. And the other one was, "How can we put a focus on strengthening the families to strengthen society?" Because obviously, it starts from the ground.
Yeah, that's a huge issue for me, obviously, I've been working on that for over 30 years. Here again, make your voice heard. And so I go, "Talk to my representatives, they know how I feel about the family, they know when I see something in the community that's gonna negatively impact families, man, they're gonna hear it from me." And they know it, and often, they back down, to be honest, because the minute you make those connections and connect the dots to this is impacting the family, all of a sudden, they go, "Oh," you know, they start to pay attention. So I think the, the family has to be really promoted, really protected, and that's up to us.
Yeah.
Really up to us.
Excellent. Well, this has been fabulous. You, you have lots of great stories, and you really are a force to be reckoned with. I can tell in our one little conversation, I, I think most of, I, I think everyone that's listening and anyone that would know you that lives in Utah would want you as the governor right now.
Oh.
Herbert, oh, but you could do it, boy, you wouldn't be mask-mandating Utah, that's for sure.
Oh, yeah, me and South Dakota, all the way.
Oh, my gosh, she is my girl crush.
Hero, absolutely. And, and, yeah, not even a question.
Awesome.
Not even a question. Yeah, one of the things I get really tired about is, you know, I'm a conservative, but, you know, I, I think libertarian too, but, you know, well, I believe in freedom, but, you know, and we call that the Butt Caucus, and I see a lot of that, you know, I see a lot of that, and boy, I hold them accountable.
I think it's pretty ironic that Governor Herbert, who was also a member of our faith, doesn't understand or doesn't follow the principle of, "Teach them correct principles and let them govern them."
I use that all the time.
Yes.
All the time, people go, "Wow."
I've been thinking too.
I use that all the time.
Let, you know, like Kristi Noem, that's who she was, that's what she did. She said, "This is what's going on, you make the choice. It's not too difficult, and if you're not a power-hungry person, and if you don't, you know, think too highly of yourself, that's what you do. You let the people make their own, you, you go out and research the heck out of stuff, get the specialists, get all the information, give it to the people and say, 'Here's the information.'"
You educate, and that goes for every single blessed issue. You educate the people, and then you say, "Now, govern yourselves, take care of yourselves, do what's gonna be best for you and your family." Yep, no, we'll agree.
Yep.
All right.
We're gonna wrap it up. So thank you so much for your time. I'm, I'm going to post this tomorrow, which would be Saturday, the 19th.